Hello everyone. Today I will be doing the lessons of nature of contract of employment and the test for workman for industrial law. So before we go into these lessons, it's best if we understand the very beginning of labour law. So this all started to happen during the Industrial Revolution times. So if you are aware about your world history, you will know during that time there was a huge rift between the workman and the factory owners. This was because the workmen were exploited and discriminated by these employers as they are paid lower wages and they were not given any benefits for the hard labour they provided. So this led for the workman to protest and strike demanding better laws to protect the rights of workmen. And that was the time labour laws were implemented and today such labour laws are existing in our world as well. However, with regards to labour law, there's a general limitation regarding its applicability. That is because labour law only governs workmen or the servants but not independent contractors. So based on this demarcation, there exist two types of contracts. That is the contract of service and the contract for service. So first of all, let's understand who is an independent contractor and who is an employee or a servant. So the independent contractor is someone who is also employed by the employer in an organisation to perform a specific task. And this independent contractor has a right to exercise his own discretion regarding the time and the manner he performs such task. So based on this, he would only be bound by the terms of the contract but not by the orders of such employer. Because of this reasons, the independent contractor is governed by the contract for service which is not under the labour law. If you are to move ahead with employee or the servants, they are also employed by the employer of an organisation. However, the power of work is controlled by that employer. Therefore, an employee or a servant is governed by the contract of service and they are entitled for the benefits and liabilities of labour law. If you are to move ahead with a case, De Silva versus Associated Newspapers of Ceylon. The question of whether the contract is one of contract of service or contract for service is a question of law. So it is not to be determined by the words used in the contract but by the actual relationship that exists between such parties. Moreover, J W Salmon has defined a servant to be someone who is employed by another to do work for him, subject to the control and the direction of such an employer. So if you move on, this is supplementary actually for your knowledge. There are four features of contract of service that enables you to better understand the features of an employee with regards to an independent contractor. So these four features are delegation, place, integral part and the payment of remuneration. When it comes to delegation, the workman or the employee has to perform that task by himself. But when it comes to independent contractor, he can delegate that performance of work to someone else. So based on that, you get to differentiate between the independent contractor and the workman. When it comes to the feature of place, the workman has to perform that task in the premises of such employer. But the independent contractor doesn't always have to. But this has its own exceptions where there are instances where independent contractors perform the specific task in this employer's premises. Moving on to the third feature, integral part. So the employee is an integral part of such organisation or business. But independent contractor is a temporary person summoned to that organisation or business to perform a specific task. So therefore, employee or the servant will be considered as an integral part of a company but the independent contractor will be considered as an accessory to that company. If you go ahead with the last feature, which is the payment of remuneration. So the employee is one who is paid for the time he worked. But an independent contractor is paid for the job he performed. So it's obvious now if you get, for example, a banker. So that person reports to work every day, in the sense five days a week and for a month. So he is paid, he or she is paid for the days he reported to work. However, independent contract is not paid as so. That person is paid for the job he performed during that specific time. Alright, now if we are to go ahead with tests to differentiate independent contractor from that of the workman or the employee, there are four tests. That's the control test, integral test, economic reality test and the multiple test. So if we are to go ahead with the first test, the control test, as it means by its term. A servant is subject to the command of his or her master as to the manner of how he or she should do this work. So if we move ahead with a case, Ready Mix Concrete versus Minister of Pensions. So in this case, they have said, "Control includes the power of deciding how things are to be done, the way in which it should be done, the means of employing in doing it and the time and place it should be done." So here we understand that when it comes to an employer and employee, the employer exercise, the employer will exercise the right of control over such an employee. If we move on to another case, Cassidy versus Minister of Health. It was held, visiting surgeons are not employed by contract of service as the hospital authorities cannot direct them as to what to do and how to perform them. But nurses are employed by the hospital authority, paid by them and liable for being dismissed by them. So therefore, these nurses, matrons in a hospital are governed by contract of service as they are employees or servants. But surgeons will be contrary to this as they would be governed by contract for service or they would be considered as independent contractors. This is actually, if we get the reality of, the reality as well. When you go to a hospital, you, you know that this doctor is not only employed by this hospital. They will be employed by various hospitals in this island. So therefore, there won't be a workman or a servant in a particular hospital unlike a matron or a nurse. So if we go to another case, De Silva versus Associated Newspapers of Ceylon. They say control means the right of control rather than the actual control. So we'll go for the first time such the control test was used. Control test was first used during the 19th century. So they have proposed that the higher the power or higher the control that the employer can exercise over that employee, the courts would be most likely to consider such a worker as an employee. However, during 1940s and 1950s, this test went into disuse. So in today's view, because of technological development and specialization of skills, furthermore, the value of the control test has deteriorated. That is because when the servant become more specialized or more skilled, the master has to give freedom to such worker to work in the manner which is most suitable. As well now, this has been, this same view has been agreed to by Justice Samara Vikramah where he stated that the control test is not the sole criterion in deciding the nature of the relationship between two parties for a contract. Moreover, Lord Denning is also of the view that the greater the skills a servant possesses, the lesser the control the master has over them. Moving on to the next test, which is the integral test. A servant or an employee is considered to perform an integral part for that organisation or that business. Whereas, an independent contractor is someone who is temporary and is only summoned to perform a specific task and would not perform an integral value or integral part to this organisation. So in other words, we can propose that workman or a servant is a, is part and parcel of the organisation. But an independent contractor would be considered as an accessory to this organisation. So this integral test was first developed in the case of Stevenson, Jordan and Harrison versus McDonald. Where in this case, it was held that under a contract of service or employee, man is employed as part of the business and his work is done as an integral part of such business. Whereas, under a contract for service or independent contractor, although he does work for the business, it's not an integrated, it's not an integrated part of the business but merely an accessory towards it. Moving on to the third test, which is the economic reality test. So as the name suggests and proposes, it has an economic element towards it. So this is based on the relationship of profits and losses. So in this case, they look into the fact or they test who is going to experience both profits and loss at the end of the day. So if we get a case, US versus Silk. In, it has proposed in this test, the question is whether only one party is investing money in which the event the other party would be considered as a workman or a servant. If both parties are investing money in the business, then the relationship between the parties cannot be one of employer and employee. So accordingly, if only one party is enjoying profits and suffering the losses, the relationship with, relationship would be one of contract of service, so that is employer and employee. Now if you get the gist of it, an employer is the one who would experience the chance of profit, chance of profits and the risk of losses at the end of the day. It's not something that the employee will experience because the employee will be paid a monthly stable salary and they wouldn't be experiencing profits or losses. But when it comes to an independent contractor, as they are only paid for the job they perform, they will have to experience the chance of profits and the risk of losses. Moving on to the last test, which is the multiple test or the four-fold test. In the case of Montreal versus Montreal Locomotive, Lord Wright has held that the question regarding the contracts can only be settled by examining the various elements or the whole of various elements which constitute the relationship between such parties. So it can be held that you can't only be use, you only be using one test to ascertain whether such person is independent contractor or a workman but you will have to look into and use various tests to fully grasp and fully understand such person is a workman or an independent contractor. So moving on, we'll go with judicial decisions with regards to contract of service and contract for service. So I would be doing three cases and I suggest that you also read these questions, these cases and try to understand them. So in the first case, I would mention is Ready Mix Concrete versus Minister of Pensions and National Insurance. So what happens in these cases, I'll go with, I'll briefly touch upon the facts of the case. That is, a person had a contract for carriage of concrete. And this person acquired the lorry through hire and purchase from another company. So this lorry was painted in the Ready Mix Concrete, that is the company colours. And they were, they proposed that the lorry has to be available to this company at all times. He is not to use the lorry for any other purposes. He has to wear the company uniform and carry out all the reasonable orders of the company as if he were an employee of this company. He was, he was entitled to employ other substitute drivers. He was free to buy fuel and this company gave no instructions as to the method of route of driving. And finally, he was paid per mile. So in this situation, the contract has proposed that he is an independent contractor. The case, so in this case, regarding this case, the court applied all the tests which is the control test, the integral test, the economic reality test and the multiple test. And they deduced that more importance was given to the fact of the ability of this employee or this, sorry, for this worker to employ substitute drivers. Therefore, the court decided that this person is indeed an independent contractor as he is most likely to a contract of carriage more than the contract of service. So the next case I would like to discuss is the Reverend Father Alexis Benedict of Youth Fisheries Training Project versus the Densil Pereira case. So I'll go through the facts briefly as well here. So what happens was, there was training in deep sea fishing. They were given work after such training was done. They were paid fifty percent of the catch at the end of each month. And other fifty percent was paid to meet the expenses. They were paid the E P F or the Employees Providence Fund, hostels were provided. So the courts applied the control test, the integral test and the economic reality test and determined that the project exercised control over many aspects of this venture and both financial risk of this venture. Thus, these workmen are an integral part of the project and as, because of that, they were considered as employees or servants who are governed by the contract of service. So if we discuss that case, these trainees, they were provided work after the training and as well as that, they were paid, they were paid E P F as well as they were paid fifty percent for their necessities. So therefore, the economic, if we employ the economic reality test, what happens is the chance of profit and the risk of losses are borne by the employers and as well as they were considered as an integral part of this venture. And the employers were considered, the employers exercised considerable control over these employees and this venture. Alright, and we'll discuss another case, which is the Pereira versus Marika Bawa Limited case. So again here, I will give a gist about the facts of the case. So this person was a head cutter of a tailoring company and he was provided with his own cubicle. He was able to employ his own workman. A commission can be collected for each month. He did not have to sign the attendance registry and he is not entitled to a bonus. So it was held, the courts have held that this workman has provided an integral aspect to this business or has been a part and parcel to this organisation. As he did not carry this business as a head cutter in this tailoring company as a business that solely belongs to him. Therefore, he has provided his work as a workman to this company. More or, as well, this additional as well, the courts held that here the control test is not an appropriate test. As the applicant possessed special skills and expertise and therefore they had to apply the integration test. So we would always get confused that he has the ability to employ his own workman as well. So in that case, in that situation, the courts have disregarded the utilization of control test but they have gone ahead with the integration test. Alright, we will be discussing some past paper questions and I would like to discuss the October 2019 question number two. So in this, the question has provided that the company engages fifteen people as mechanics and the company provides T-shirts to the mechanics to wear during working hours. The company provides motorbikes and tools. Company pays rupees twenty-five thousand as retaining fees to each mechanic and then, and also allowance based on the repairs. The mechanics cannot delegate their work to any person. But however, at the end, it has stated that the company treats them as independent contractors. So they ask you whether this contract of employment is true based on the facts that has been provided. So they are asking a question basically, is it fair or is it correct for the company to treat these employees, to treat these people as independent contractors or should that be changed? So in this case, we can use the test that we previously discussed. So if we go to the aspect of control, here the workmen are subject to the command of the employer. We can see there to the manner of wearing the company T-shirts during the working hours. So you can ascertain that based on this fact, the employer exercises certain control over his employees. Therefore, we can actually challenge that proposition that they have, that they have stated in these contracts saying that these are independent contractors. So if we use the second test, integral test. This company has engaged fifteen workmen as mechanics and each of them supply their service to the same integral part of being a mobile repair service of vehicles in and around Colombo. So this company is basically a mobile repair service company. And what these fifteen mechanics do is, they assist to this, this work of repairing or mobile repairing service. So it can be ascertained that these fifteen mechanics provide an integral part to the company. So therefore, these fifteen workmen are part and parcel to this company. So therefore, we can again challenge that they are not integral, sorry, independent contractors but they are basically workmen. So if we go to the multiple, the economic, the multiple test. So therefore, the employer, we can say, as we previously mentioned, employer has certain control over the employees. And also, these employees cannot delegate their work to any other person. And moreover, the company has provided, as mentioned, they have provided motorbikes and tools for these employees. Furthermore, they are paid twenty-five thousand as retaining fees to each mechanic and also an allowance is paid for the repairs undertaken during the month. So therefore, you can understand, this also leads to the economic reality test. They are paid twenty-five thousand as retaining fees and also they are given allowance for the repairs undertaken during the month. So you can see that the aspect of chance of profit and risk of loss is eliminated in this scenario. Which is that these workmen, so these fifteen mechanics are not experiencing loss and profits. So therefore, they are inherently workmen of this company as well as now it was ascertained from the multiple test, from the control test, that they have, the employer has considerable control of the workman. Integral test, they are providing mechanical services to a mechanical company. And if you take the economic reality test, they are provided retaining fees and an allowance. And also if you use the multiple test, it can be ascertained that the proposing of these workmen as independent contractors is, is wrong. And it should be, they should be treated as a workman or servants and not as independent contractors. So therefore, their contract has to be a contract of service and they are entitled for the rights and liabilities of the labour law. Alright, let's take another question, the past paper, October 2018, question two. So this is about Colombo KSL Foods Limited. They have engaged twenty people to deliver food since 2013. The company provides uniforms to wear during working hours. The agreement has a clause as, open quotes, "Your agreement with the company will not come true employer-employer relationship", close quotes. Doesn't pay wages but pays only a commission calculated on the basis of fifty percent of total value of food delivered per month. So they are asking, discuss whether the delivery persons are workmen or independent contractors of this company. So based on the facts that they have provided us, we'll go ahead with the test, which is the control test. So this evidence has provided in this case that they are required to pair, required to wear the uniform during working hours and they are to be undertaking, they are not to be undertaking any other work during the subsistence of this contract. So therefore, you can understand that the employers have exercised certain amount of control to this workman. So if you are to go ahead with the integral part, integration test. What has happened is that these employees provide a delivery service for this company. That is an integral part to this company. And based on the fulfillment of a core objective of this company, we can challenge what they have stated in the contract that they have been saying they are not, they don't have an employer-employer relationship. So if you are to go to the economic reality test, it's provided in this case that they are not paid not paid wages but pays only a commission calculated on the basis of fifteen percent of the total value. So what we can understand in this present scenario is that the monthly commission that are, that is paid for these employees fluct- can fluctuate due to the profit or losses faced by the company and not these workers. So we can understand the profit and losses would be borne finally, not by these workers, but by the company. So based on the final test, which is the multiple test, um, there are factors such as control, providing tools, chance of profit and risk of loss. Um, that kind of factors can be used regarding multiple test because it was already proposed by the US versus, sorry, by uh other cases as well that you have to rely on multiple tests to ascertain whether there is indeed a workman employer relationship or anything else. So therefore, you can uh employ multiple tests as well uh be, based on the, be, based on various features. Now in the previous uh past paper, we discussed that they were provided with uh uh tools or they were given the motorbikes as well as they have the control and other elements as well. But in this case, we can propose that they have not provided uh much information or facts regarding uh this multiple test, regarding other provisions to ascertain a multiple test. So however, based on the test that we have employed, the control test, the integral test and the economic reality test, we can ascertain that uh they, they are not independent contractors as uh they have stated in the contract, because they have stated in the contract, your agreement with the company will not construe employer employer relationship. But we can challenge that and state, no, they are indeed workmen and they will be governed by the labor laws. So this is actually a very important lesson uh for the, for the industrial law paper, as you can see. Uh, we discussed two past papers and both of them are with regards to the question two. So I hope, I, after going through the notes and understand the lesson, you are very much able to attempt that question in every past paper and I hope you will be able to uh get all the sixteen marks. So I'll, we'll meet you with another video for industrial law and until then, uh, take care.